Good evening. Tonight is July 18th, Monday. We're currently about to begin the regular Town Council meeting, which is in adherence with FOIA and open meetings stage law. We are at the group right now. It's 6:51 and we've just started about 10 minutes. If I know who participates, I need to be there in person now for now. What do you assume? I think I have a picture of it. For my sisters, sisters, my crazy, they're all like 10 minutes before the meeting starts.
About 18:53.
Or in the future, it's advanced. You want more than looks. Who wants to roll the roller? Roll the. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[79.22][79.25][S01. Thank you.[80.02][80.05][S01. Thank you.[80.81][80.84][S01. Thank you.[81.62][81.65][S01. Thank you.[82.42][82.45][S01. Thank you.[83.22][83.25][S01. Thank you.[84.02][84.05][S01. Thank you.[84.81][84.84][S01. Thank you.[85.62][85.65][S01. Thank you.[86.42][86.45][S01. Thank you.[87.22][87.25][S01. Thank you.[88.02][88.05][S01. Thank you.[88.81][88.84][S01. Thank you.[89.62][89.65][S01. Thank you.[90.42][90.45][S01. Thank you.[91.22][91.25][S01. Thank you.[92.02][92.05][S01. Thank you.[92.81][92.84][S01. Thank you.[93.62][93.65][S01. Thank you.[94.42][94.45][S01. Thank you.[95.22][95.25][S01. Thank you.[96.02][96.05][S01. Thank you.[96.81][96.84][S01. Thank you.[97.62][97.65][S01. Thank you.[98.42][98.45][S01. Thank you.[99.22][99.25][S01. Thank you.[100.02][100.05][S01. Thank you.[100.81][100.84][S01. Thank you.[101.62][101.65][S01. Thank you.[102.42][102.45][S01. Thank you.[103.22][103.25][S01. Thank you.[104.02][104.05][S01. Thank you.[104.81][104.84][S01. Thank you.[105.62][105.65][S01. Thank you.[106.42][106.45][S01. Thank you.[107.22][107.25][S01. Thank you.[108.02][108.05][S01. Thank you.[108.81][108.84][S01. Thank you.[109.62][109.65][S01. Thank you.[110.42][110.45][S01. Thank you.[111.22][111.25][S01. Thank you.[112.02][112.05][S01. Thank you.[112.81][112.84][S01. Thank you.[113.62][113.65][S01. Thank you.[114.42][114.45][S01. Thank you.[115.22][115.25][S01. Thank you.[116.02][116.05][S01. Thank you.[116.81][116.84][S01. Thank you.[117.62][117.65][S01. Thank you.[118.42][118.45][S01. Thank you.[119.22][119.25][S01. Thank you.[120.02][120.05][S01. Thank you.[120.81][120.84][S01. Thank you.[121.62][121.65][S01. Thank you.[122.42][122.45][S01. Thank you.[123.22][123.25][S01. Thank you.[124.02][124.05][S01. Thank you.[124.81][124.84][S01. Thank you.[125.62][125.65][S01. Thank you.[126.42][126.45][S01. Thank you.[127.22][127.25][S01. Thank you.[128.02][128.05][S01. Thank you.[128.81][128.84][S01. Thank you.[129.62][129.65][S01. Thank you.[130.41][130.44][S01. Thank you.[131.22][131.25][S01. Thank you.[132.02][132.05][S01. Thank you.[132.81][132.84][S01. Thank you.[133.62][133.65][S01. Thank you.[134.41][134.44][S01. Thank you.[135.22][135.25][S01. Thank you.[136.02][136.05][S01. Thank you.[136.81][136.84][S01. Thank you.[137.62][137.65][S01. Thank you.[138.41][138.44][S01. Thank you.[139.22][139.25][S01. Thank you.[140.02][140.05][S01. Thank you.[140.81][140.84][S01. Thank you.[141.62][141.65][S01. Thank you.[142.41][142.44][S01. Thank you.[143.22][143.25][S01. Thank you.[144.02][144.05][S01. Thank you.[144.81][144.84][S01. Thank you.[145.62][145.65][S01. Thank you.[146.41][146.44][S01. Thank you.[147.22][147.25][S01. Thank you.[148.02][148.05][S01. Thank you.[148.81][148.84][S01. Thank you.[149.62][149.65][S01. Thank you.[150.41][150.44][S01. Thank you.[151.22][151.25][S01. Thank you.[152.02][152.05][S01. Thank you.[152.81][152.84][S01. Thank you.[153.62][153.65][S01. Thank you.[154.41][154.44][S01. Thank you.[155.22][155.25][S01. Thank you.[156.02][156.05][S01. Thank you.[156.81][156.84][S01. Thank you.[157.62][157.65][S01. Thank you.[158.41][158.44][S01. Thank you.[159.22][159.25][S01. Thank you.[160.02][160.05][S01. Thank you.[160.81][160.84][S01. Thank you.[161.62][161.65][S01. Thank you.[162.41][162.44][S01. Thank you.[163.22][163.25][S01. Thank you.[164.02][164.05][S01. Thank you.[164.81][164.84][S01. Thank you.[165.62][165.65][S01. Thank you.[166.41][166.44][S01. Thank you.[167.22][167.25][S01. Thank you.[168.02][168.05][S01. Thank you.[168.81][168.84][S01. Thank you.[169.62][169.65][S01. Thank you.[170.41][170.44][S01. Thank you.[171.22][171.25][S01. Thank you.[172.02][172.05][S01. Thank you.[172.81][172.84][S01. Thank you.[173.62][173.65][S01. Thank you.[174.41][174.44][S01. Thank you.[175.22][175.25][S01. Thank you.[176.02][176.05][S01. Thank you.[176.81][176.84][S01. Thank you.[177.62][177.65][S01. Thank you.[178.41][178.44][S01. Thank you.[179.22][179.25][S01. Thank you.[180.02][180.05][S01. Thank you.[180.81][180.84][S01. Thank you.[181.62][181.65][S01. Thank you.[182.41][182.44][S01. Thank you.[183.22][183.25][S01. Thank you.[184.02][184.05][S01. Thank you.[184.81][184.84][S01. Thank you.[185.62][185.65][S01. Thank you.[186.41][186.44][S01. Thank you.[187.22][187.25][S01. Thank you.[188.02][188.05][S01. Thank you.[188.81][188.84][S01. Thank you.[189.62][189.65][S01. Thank you.[190.41][190.44][S01. Thank you.[191.22][191.25][S01. Thank you.[192.02][192.05][S01. Thank you.[192.81][192.84][S01. Thank you.[193.62][193.65][S01. Thank you.[194.41][194.44][S01. Thank you.[195.22][195.25][S01. Thank you.[196.02][196.05][S01. Thank you.[196.81][196.84][S01. Thank you.[197.62][197.65][S01. Thank you.[198.41][198.44][S01. Thank you.[199.22][199.25][S01. Thank you.[200.02][200.05][S01. Thank you.[200.81][200.84][S01. Thank you.[201.62][201.65][S01. Thank you.[202.41][202.44][S01. Thank you.[203.22][203.25][S01. Thank you.[204.02][204.05][S01. Thank you.[204.81][204.84][S01. Thank you.[205.62][205.65][S01. Thank you.[206.41][206.44][S01. Thank you.[207.22][207.25][S01. Thank you.[208.02][208.05][S01. Thank you.[208.81][208.84][S01. Thank you.[209.62][209.65][S01. Thank you.[210.41][210.44][S01. Thank you.[211.22][211.25][S01. Thank you.[212.02][212.05][S01. Thank you.[212.81][212.84][S01. Thank you.[213.62][213.65][S01. Thank you.[214.41][214.44][S01. Thank you.[215.22][215.25][S01. Thank you.[216.02][216.05][S01. Thank you.[216.81][216.84][S01. Thank you.[217.62][217.65][S01. Thank you.[218.41][218.44][S01. Thank you.[219.22][219.25][S01. Thank you.[220.02][220.05][S01. Thank you.[220.81][220.84][S01. Thank you.[221.62][221.65][S01. Thank you.[222.41][222.44][S01. Thank you.[223.22][223.25][S01. Thank you.[224.02][224.05][S01. Thank you.[224.81][224.84][S01. Thank you.[225.62][225.65][S01. Thank you.[226.41][226.44][S01. Thank you.[227.22][227.25][S01. Thank you.[228.02][228.05][S01. Thank you.[228.81][228.84][S01. Thank you.[229.62][229.65][S01. Thank you.[230.41][230.44][S01. Thank you.[231.22][231.25][S01. Thank you.[232.02][232.05][S01. Thank you.[232.81][232.84][S01. Thank you.[233.62][233.65][S01. Thank you.[234.41][234.44][S01. Thank you.[235.22][235.25][S01. Thank you.[236.02][236.05][S01. Thank you.[236.81][236.84][S01. Thank you.[237.62][237.65][S01. Thank you.[238.41][238.44][S01. Thank you.[239.22][239.25][S01. Thank you.[240.02][240.05][S01. Thank you.[240.81][240.84][S01. Thank you.[241.62][241.65][S01. Thank you.[242.41][242.44][S01. Thank you.[243.22][243.25][S01. Thank you.[244.02][244.05][S01. Thank you.[244.81][244.84][S01. Thank you.[245.62][245.65][S01. Thank you.[246.41][246.44][S01. Thank you.[247.22][247.25][S01. Thank you.[248.02][248.05][S01. Thank you.[248.81][248.84][S01. Thank you.[249.62][249.65][S01. Thank you.[250.41][250.44][S01. Thank you.[251.22][251.25][S01. Thank you.[252.02][252.05][S01. Thank you.[252.81][252.84][S01. Thank you.[253.62][253.65][S01. Thank you.[254.41][254.44][S01. Thank you.[255.22][255.25][S01. Thank you.[256.02][256.05][S01. Thank you.[256.81][256.83][S01. Thank you.[257.62][257.64][S01. Thank you.[258.41][258.44][S01. Thank you.[259.22][259.25][S01. Thank you.[260.02][260.05][S01. Thank you.[260.81][260.83][S01. Thank you.[261.62][261.64][S01. Thank you.[262.41][262.44][S01. Thank you.[263.22][263.25][S01. Thank you.[264.02][264.05][S01. Thank you.[264.81][264.83][S01. Thank you.[265.62][265.64][S01. Thank you.[266.41][266.44][S01. Thank you.[267.22][267.25][S01. Thank you.[268.02][268.05][S01. Thank you.[268.81][268.83][S01. Thank you.[269.62][269.64][S01. Thank you.[270.41][270.44][S01. Thank you.[271.22][271.25][S01. Thank you.[272.02][272.05][S01. Thank you.[272.81][272.83][S01. Thank you.[273.62][273.64][S01. Thank you.[274.41][274.44][S01. Thank you.[275.22][275.25][S01. Thank you.[276.02][276.05][S01. Thank you.[276.81][276.83][S01. Thank you.[277.62][277.64][S01. Thank you.[278.41][278.44][S01. Thank you.[279.22][279.25][S01. Thank you.[280.02][280.05][S01. Thank you.[280.81][280.83][S01. Thank you.[281.62][281.64][S01. Thank you.[282.41][282.44][S01. Thank you.[283.22][283.25][S01. Thank you.[284.02][284.05][S01. Thank you.[284.81][284.83][S01. Thank you.[285.62][285.64][S01. Thank you.[286.41][286.44][S01. Thank you.[287.22][287.25][S01. Thank you.[288.02][288.05][S01. Thank you.[288.81][288.83][S01. Thank you.[289.62][289.64][S01. Thank you.[290.41][290.44][S01. Thank you.[291.22][291.25][S01. Thank you.[292.02][292.05][S01. Thank you.[292.81][292.83][S01. Thank you.[293.62][293.64][S01. Thank you.[294.41][294.44][S01. Thank you.[295.22][295.25][S01. Thank you.[296.02][296.05][S01. Thank you.[296.81][296.83][S01. Thank you.[297.62][297.64][S01. Thank you.[298.41][298.44][S01. Thank you.[299.22][299.25][S01. Thank you.[300.02][300.05][S01. Thank you.[300.81][300.83][S01. Thank you.[301.62][301.64][S01. Thank you.[302.41][302.44][S01. Thank you.[303.22][303.25][S01. Thank you.[304.02][304.05][S01. Thank you.[304.81][304.83][S01. Thank you.[305.62][305.64][S01. Thank you.[306.41][306.44][S01. Thank you.[307.22][307.25][S01. Thank you.[308.02][308.05][S01. Thank you.[308.81][308.83][S01. Thank you.[309.62][309.64][S01. Thank you.[310.41][310.44][S01. Thank you.[311.22][311.25][S01. Thank you.[312.02][312.05][S01. Thank you.[312.81][312.83][S01. Thank you.[313.62][313.64][S01. Thank you.[314.41][314.44][S01. Thank you.[315.22][315.25][S01. Thank you.[316.02][316.05][S01. Thank you.[316.81][316.83][S01. Thank you.[317.62][317.64][S01. Thank you.[318.41][318.44][S01. Thank you.[319.22][319.25][S01. Thank you.[320.02][320.05][S01. Thank you.[320.81][320.83][S01. Thank you.[321.62][321.64][S01. Thank you.[322.41][322.44][S01. Thank you.[323.22][323.25][S01. Thank you.[324.02][324.05][S01. Thank you.[324.81][324.83][S01. Thank you.[325.62][325.64][S01. Thank you.[326.41][326.44][S01. Thank you.[327.22][327.25][S01. Thank you.[328.02][328.05][S01. Thank you.[328.81][328.83][S01. Thank you.[329.62][329.64][S01. Thank you.[330.41][330.44][S01. Thank you.[331.22][331.25][S01. Thank you.[332.02][332.05][S01. Thank you.[332.81][332.83][S01. Thank you.[333.62][333.64][S01. Thank you.[334.41][334.44][S01. Thank you.[335.22][335.25][S01. Thank you.[336.02][336.05][S01. Thank you.[336.81][336.83][S01. Thank you.[337.62][337.64][S01. Thank you.[338.41][338.44][S01. Thank you.[339.22][339.25][S01. Thank you.[340.02][340.05][S01. Thank you.[340.81][340.83][S01. Thank you.[341.62][341.64][S01. Thank you.[342.41][342.44][S01. Thank you.[343.22][343.25][S01. Thank you.[344.02][344.05][S01. Thank you.[344.81][344.83][S01. Thank you.[345.62][345.64][S01. Thank you.[346.41][346.44][S01. Thank you.[347.22][347.25][S01. Thank you.[348.02][348.05][S01. Thank you.[348.81][348.83][S01. Thank you.[349.62][349.64][S01. Thank you.[350.41][350.44][S01. Thank you.[351.22][351.25][S01. Thank you.[352.02][352.05][S01. Thank you.[352.81][352.83][S01. Thank you.[353.62][353.64][S01. Thank you.[354.41][354.44][S01. Thank you.[355.22][355.25][S01. Thank you.[356.02][356.05][S01. Thank you.[356.81][356.83][S01. Thank you.[357.62][357.64][S01. Thank you.[358.41][358.44][S01. Thank you.[359.22][359.25][S01. Thank you.[360.02][360.05][S01. Thank you.[360.81][360.83][S01. Thank you.[361.62][361.64][S01. Thank you.[362.41][362.44][S01. Thank you.[363.22][363.25][S01. Thank you.[364.02][364.05][S01. Thank you.[364.81][364.83][S01. Thank you.[365.62][365.64][S01. Thank you.[366.41][366.44][S01. Thank you.[367.22][367.25][S01. Thank you.[368.02][368.05][S01. Thank you.[368.81][368.83][S01. Thank you.[369.62][369.64][S01. Thank you.[370.41][370.44][S01. Thank you.[371.22][371.25][S01. Thank you.[372.02][372.05][S01. Thank you.[372.81][372.83][S01. Thank you.[373.62][373.64][S01. Thank you.[374.41][374.44][S01. Thank you.[375.22][375.25][S01. Thank you.[376.02][376.05][S01. Thank you.[376.81][376.83][S01. Thank you.[377.62][377.64][S01. Thank you.[378.41][378.44][S01. Thank you.[379.22][379.25][S01. Thank you.[380.02][380.05][S01. Thank you.[380.81][380.83][S01. Thank you.[381.62][381.64][S01. Thank you.[382.41][382.44][S01. Thank you.[383.22][383.25][S01. Thank you.[384.02][384.05][S01. Thank you.[384.81][384.83][S01. Thank you.[385.62][385.64][S01. Thank you.[386.41][386.44][S01. Thank you.[387.22][387.25][S01. Thank you.[388.02][388.05][S01. Thank you.[388.81][388.83][S01. Thank you.[389.62][389.64][S01. Thank you.[390.41][390.44][S01. Thank you.[391.22][391.25][S01. Thank you.[392.02][392.05][S01. Thank you.[392.81][392.83][S01. Thank you.[393.62][393.64][S01. Thank you.[394.41][394.44][S01. Thank you.[395.22][395.25][S01. Thank you.[396.02][396.05][S01. Thank you.[396.81][396.83][S01. Thank you.[397.62][397.64][S01. Thank you.[398.41][398.44][S01. Thank you.[399.22][399.25][S01. Thank you.[400.02][400.05][S01. Thank you.[400.81][400.83][S01. Thank you.[401.62][401.64][S01. Thank you.[402.41][402.44][S01. Thank you.[403.22][403.25][S01. Thank you.[404.02][404.05][S01. Thank you.[404.81][404.83][S01. Thank you.[405.62][405.64][S01. Thank you.[406.41][406.44][S01. Thank you.[407.22][407.25][S01. Thank you.[408.02][408.05][S01. Thank you.[408.81][408.83][S01. Thank you.[409.62][409.64][S01. Thank you.[410.41][410.44][S01. Thank you.[411.22][411.25][S01. Thank you.[412.02][412.05][S01. Thank you.[412.81][412.83][S01. Thank you.[413.62][413.64][S01. Thank you.[414.41][414.44][S01. Thank you.[415.22][415.25][S01. Thank you.[416.02][416.05][S01. Thank you.[416.81][416.83][S01. Thank you.[417.62][417.64][S01. Thank you.[418.41][418.44][S01. Thank you.[419.22][419.25][S01. Thank you.[420.02][420.05][S01. Thank you.[420.81][420.83][S01. Thank you.[421.62][421.64][S01. Thank you.[422.41][422.44][S01. Thank you.[423.22][423.25][S01. Thank you.[424.02][424.05][S01. Thank you.[424.81][424.83][S01. Thank you.[425.62][425.64][S01. Thank you.[426.41][426.44][S01. Thank you.[427.22][427.25][S01. Thank you.[428.02][428.05][S01. Thank you.[428.81][428.83][S01. Thank you.[429.62][429.64][S01. Thank you.[430.41][430.44][S01. Thank you.[431.22][431.25][S01. Thank you.[432.02][432.05][S01. Thank you.[432.81][432.83][S01. Thank you.[433.62][433.64][S01. Thank you.[434.41][434.44][S01. Thank you.[435.22][435.25][S01. Thank you.[436.02][436.05][S01. Thank you.[436.81][436.83][S01. Thank you.[437.62][437.64][S01. Thank you.[438.41][438.44][S01. Thank you.[439.22][439.25][S01. Thank you.[440.02][440.05][S01. Thank you.[440.81][440.83][S01. Thank you.[441.62][441.64][S01. Thank you.[442.41][442.44][S01. Thank you.[443.22][443.25][S01. Thank you.[444.02][444.05][S01. Thank you.[444.81][444.83][S01. Thank you.[445.62][445.64][S01. Thank you.[446.41][446.44][S01. Thank you.[447.22][447.25][S01. Thank you.[448.02][448.05][S01. Thank you.[448.81][448.83][S01. Thank you.[449.62][449.64][S01. Thank you.[450.41][450.44][S01. Thank you.[451.22][451.25][S01. Thank you.[452.02][452.05][S01. Thank you.[452.81][452.83][S01. Thank you.[453.62][453.64][S01. Thank you.[454.41][454.44][S01. Thank you.[455.22][455.25][S01. Thank you.[456.02][456.05][S01. Thank you.[456.81][456.83][S01. Thank you.[457.62][457.64][S01. Thank you.[458.41][458.44][S01. Thank you.[459.22][459.25][S01. Thank you.[460.02][460.05][S01. Thank you.[460.81][460.83][S01. Thank you.[461.62][461.64][S01. Thank you.[462.41][462.44][S01. Thank you.[463.22][463.25][S01. Thank you.[464.02][464.05][S01. Thank you.[464.81][464.83][S01. Thank you.[465.62][465.64][S01. Thank you.[466.41][466.44][S01. Thank you.[467.22][467.25][S01. Thank you.[468.02][468.05][S01. Thank you.[468.81][468.83][S01. Thank you.[469.62][469.64][S01. Thank you.[470.41][470.44][S01. Thank you.[471.22][471.25][S01. Thank you.[472.02][472.05][S01. Thank you.[472.81][472.83][S01. Thank you.[473.62][473.64][S01. Thank you.[474.41][474.44][S01. Thank you.[475.22][475.25][S01. Thank you.[476.02][476.05][S01. Thank you.[476.81][476.83][S01. Thank you.[477.62][477.64][S01. Thank you.[478.41][478.44][S01. Thank you.[479.22][479.25][S01. Thank you.[480.02][480.05][S01. Thank you.[480.81][480.83][S01. Thank you.[481.62][481.64][S01. Thank you.[482.41][482.44][S01. Thank you.[483.22][483.25][S01. Thank you.[484.02][484.05][S01. Thank you.[484.81][484.83][S01. Thank you.[485.62][485.64][S01. Thank you.[486.41][486.44][S01. Thank you.[487.22][487.25][S01. Thank you.[488.02][488.05][S01. Thank you.[488.81][488.83][S01. Thank you.[489.62][489.64][S01. Thank you.[490.41][490.44][S01. Thank you.[491.22][491.25][S01. Thank you.[492.02][492.05][S01. Thank you.[492.81][492.83][S01. Thank you.[493.62][493.64][S01. Thank you.[494.41][494.44][S01. Thank you.[495.22][495.25][S01. Thank you.[496.02][496.05][S01. Thank you.[496.81][496.83][S01. Thank you.[497.62][497.64][S01. Thank you.[498.41][498.44][S01. Thank you.[499.22][499.25][S01. Thank you.[500.02][500.05][S01. Thank you.[500.81][500.83][S01. Thank you.[501.62][501.64][S01. Thank you.[502.41][502.44][S01. Thank you.[503.22][503.25][S01. Thank you.[504.02][504.05][S01. Thank you.[504.81][504.83][S01. Thank you.[505.62][505.64][S01. Thank you.[506.41][506.44][S01. Thank you.[507.22][507.25][S01. Thank you.[508.02][508.04][S01. Thank you.[508.81][508.83][S01. Thank you.[509.62][509.64][S01. Thank you.[510.41][510.44][S01. Thank you.[511.22][511.25][S01. Thank you.[512.02][512.04][S01. Thank you.[512.81][512.83][S01. Thank you.[513.62][513.64][S01. Thank you.[514.41][514.44][S01. Thank you.[515.22][515.25][S01. Thank you.[516.02][516.04][S01. Thank you.[516.81][516.83][S01. Thank you.[517.62][517.64][S01. Thank you.[518.41][518.44][S01. Thank you.[519.22][519.25][S01. Thank you.[520.02][520.04][S01. Thank you.[520.81][520.83][S01. Thank you.[521.62][521.64][S01. Thank you.[522.41][522.44][S01. Thank you.[523.22][523.25][S01. Thank you.[524.02][524.04][S01. Thank you.[524.81][524.83][S01. Thank you.[525.62][525.64][S01. Thank you.[526.41][526.44][S01. Thank you.[527.22][527.25][S01. Thank you.[528.02][528.04][S01. Thank you.[528.81][528.83][S01. Thank you.[529.62][529.64][S01. Thank you.[530.41][530.44][S01. Thank you.[531.22][531.25][S01. Thank you.[532.02][532.04][S01. Thank you.[532.81][532.83][S01. Thank you.[533.62][533.64][S01. Thank you.[534.41][534.44][S01. Thank you.[535.22][535.25][S01. Thank you.[536.02][536.04][S01. Thank you.[536.81][536.83][S01. Thank you.[537.62][537.64][S01. Thank you.[538.41][538.44][S01. Thank you.[539.22][539.25][S01. Thank you.[540.02][540.04][S01. Thank you.[540.81][540.83][S01. Thank you.[541.62][541.64][S01. Thank you.[542.41][542.44][S01. Thank you.[543.22][543.25][S01. Thank you.[544.02][544.04][S01. Thank you.[544.81][544.83][S01. Thank you.[545.62][545.64][S01. Thank you.[546.41][546.44][S01. Thank you.[547.22][547.25][S01. Thank you.[548.02][548.04][S01. Thank you.[548.81][548.83][S01. Thank you.[549.62][549.64][S01. Thank you.[550.41][550.44][S01. Thank you.[551.22][551.25][S01. Thank you.[552.02][552.04][S01. Thank you.[552.81][552.83][S01. Thank you.[553.62][553.64][S01. Thank you.[554.41][554.44][S01. Thank you.[555.22][555.25][S01. Thank you.[556.02][556.04][S01. Thank you.[556.81][556.83][S01. Thank you.[557.62][557.64][S01. Thank you.[558.41][558.44][S01. Thank you.[559.22][559.25][S01. Thank you.[560.02][560.04][S01. Thank you.[560.81][560.83][S01. Thank you.[561.62][561.64][S01. Thank you.[562.41][562.44][S01. Thank you.[563.22][563.25][S01. Thank you.[564.02][564.04][S01. Thank you.[564.81][564.83][S01. Thank you.[565.62][565.64][S01. Thank you.[566.41][566.44][S01. So let's stand up there.[567.81][567.83][S01. Thank you.[568.62][568.64][S01. Thank you.[569.41][569.44][S01. Thank you.[570.22][570.25][S01. Thank you.[571.02][571.04][S01. Thank you.[571.81][571.83][S01. The pledge of allegiance to the letter of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah, I do number two on our agenda this evening is approval of the consent calendar, which contains approval of the agenda as presented, the approval of minutes on the June 20th regular meeting and the financial report from June 2022. Do I hear a motion that we accept the consent calendar as presented?
I move that we accept the calendar as presented.
For a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're at our point of public forum. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak on any topic whatsoever, come forward. Let us know your name and. For George.
Hello, my name is Emily Morse. This is my mother. I'm Emily Morse. We are both residents here in Scottsville. And I'm someone with a disability. So the issue that I'm about to talk about is going to hurt two of us. Just a little background, we noticed recently that the head cap parking spots by the pavilion at the farmer's market have been moved. And the new spaces are not ADA compliant. Some had to explain how they're not compliant. He also spoke with the county commissioner of wellness. He was very kind and very understanding, very attentive. And he stated that he committed to having the spaces moved to their original, to their original spot by the pavilion so that they can be more ADA compliant. And for now, she has a few follow up questions she would like to ask.
Right.
So basically, after we spoke to Mr. Lawrence, we'd like to know if there's a date by which we can expect the spaces to be moved back. They were originally compliant and not compliant. So we'd like to know if there's a day, a target date for that. We'd like to know if there's a process by which these decisions are made so we could potentially engage ahead of time in the decision making process rather than sort of react to it afterwards. And lastly, we'd like to ask that in the future, if there's any decision making that might impact the disability community, that please be mindful, even though we do have residents and, you know, we certainly want to enjoy everything that Scottsville has to offer.
Mr. Lawrence is out of the country at the moment. Mr. Lawrence, our town clerk, has some insight on that.
Yeah, so before Mr. Lawrence left last week, he left me with the same handout that he presented to Town Council and presented to me. I handed it over Friday to our maintenance department and asked them to follow up as quickly as possible with it. I did not establish a timetable, but we are working on it. And I did make a point to ask to follow up with it. It's a big time.
We'll get, if they need to be moved, we will get them moved as quick as possible.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would think maybe to check, and hopefully this will be done before the next meeting, the agenda for the Town Council meeting should be on our town website in some form or other. That's what we're striving for now. And you can check that out or you can give the office a call and see if anything about ADA is on the agenda for that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think as you know, this side, our office is always about that.
Yeah, he was very gracious.
And I think due to our size, it's always very efficient here. The council.
Great.
Thank you.
The other public.
Just have something quick to share with her questions. So my question would be, what was the procedure to move them from the front of the building over to the side and make them not compliant? And who made that decision? And was the Town Council aware that was done? That kind of stuff that seems to be more what she was asking. And I thought was how did that happen? How would that prevent, how could it prevent it from happening again? Okay.
A little closer to the camera. Maybe you have the answers to those questions.
I think it was with, we, the farmers market in general, there was a shift in the parking spots thinking it was more appropriate. But into the minutia, it wasn't truly involved. It was more of an interaction to the town administrator and our parks maintenance. What I can do with that is hit Matt and then comes back.
Yes, we will get you an answer as soon as Matt's back. And although Supervisor Price says she does not have anything, excited to tell us this evening. It's always nice to have her in our presence. She's welcome to come forward and tell us what you've been up to anyhow.
Well, thank you, Mayor. First off, I had, it was a great Scottsville Fourth of July parade, as it always is. And congratulations to Council, Britsco, our grand marshal. We did not have a board supervisors meeting on the sixth. For the first time in two and a half years, we were able to actually have a break so that county staff could have a vacation. And I know that they really appreciated it. So I have nothing to bring to you today, but I am here in the event that you have anything for me.
Yeah. We have a question to Supervisor Price.
I would just follow up. The last time you were here, I know you and Council Payne were going to get together to talk about paving on Mount Vista Road. I don't know if that got on your docket of improvements or not.
There's been a lot of communication on it. Council Payne, I think you probably have the latest on that.
Well, you know, it was forwarded. I can't remember the latest name. She sent an email back, but I didn't see, I see that there was a lot of discussion between you and I. And I'm sorry, I think.
Probably Carrie Shepherd.
I believe it was Carrie. You're correct. And so I can see where it's being addressed, but I don't see where.
Been resolved.
It's been resolved.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Government Service Committee. What is my, sorry. On the Government Service Committee, one of my co-owners and some of the people who are on it is about having a communication with the public. And Alma Khani has an incredible e-newsletter. And I'm wondering if there's anybody in Alma Khani could help us develop that or can we piggyback with Alma Khani to inform the public? Because I know more about Alma Khani than I do about Scottsville because I get something every week from them of what's going on and where the beings are and everything. And I have to navigate, try to navigate through our website to find out. Well, I used to, but now I know. But Emily Killoy, an e-newsletter. And a lot of places have a website where you could sign up and you can get something. And they have something directly to you, notifications, announcements, you know. And if there's a way we could get more communication with the public that would be helpful, anybody with advice about that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I will send an email to Emily Killoy, the Director of Community and Public Engagement, copy to you and ask that y'all initiate that dialogue to see what assistance the county might be able to help with facilitating the distribution dissemination of information regarding Scottsville. A-mail is what we call Albemarle A-mail. Is that email that does go out. And at least in terms of providing some information, I'm not sure in terms of technology itself. But I'll connect the two of you to, and I'll copy the town clerk and town administrator and mayor as well to see if we can help get some assistance on that.
Anything else? Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Bye. Nothing really, only one new thing related to what I told you at work session was that Thursday of last week, Javier and I joined some other members of the advisory group, the Voice Girls Club. And we had a nice, our long meeting with Senator Creeddees. And he explained how, he's on the Finance Committee for the state. He explained the pre-election detail, how that works, need money. Make a deal about getting some. All right. So the alarming thing that came out of that meeting was that there are, let's say, 95 children in Buckingham that don't have a way to get here. And Buckingham pulled out of providing funds for the bus to go to Buckingham. So there's only about 25 children from Buckingham that are here right now. It's 90 that would like to go.
The Voice Girls Club.
Yeah. So when we think about our little bit of donation to the club that we approved on this current budget, probably works the rest of the group. The other thing, just without sounding like I keep repeating myself, I think, I really thank everybody who had anything that all has to do with Fourth of July. As everybody has stated, the greatest break. That's why the grand marshal here. Nice crowd. And, you know, Chief Jenkins gave us support. I don't know if Sister Price has heard us or not, but there was one fight that happened in the Food Lion Park lot at 11:30 that night. Everything was over and done with here. I guess there was one intoxicated person. And that was pretty much it for law enforcement on Fourth of July here. So we had a bunch of well behaved visitors in town and we really appreciate that. But the appreciation goes to the fire department and everybody else that had any part in making Fourth of July so successful. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to report on?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's funny, I was having this debate in my mind if I was going to share something personal. I think I will, just as a matter of public record. First of all, I was honored to be the grand marshal. That was a lot of fun. It actually had a little, it had a little extra special meaning to me that day because that week was the week that I found out that I have a very treatable prostate cancer. And the mayor is aware of that. And I will just say, I mentioned it just because you're all my friends. So you know that that's happening. So part of my journey in the coming weeks or months will be figuring out which treatment to go through. Very thankful that we've had good treatment here and thankful for the work of a lot of people. I may be a little impacted in terms of me either too that I'm involved with, but that was a little curveball this summer. But at the same time, as I said, it gave me an extra smile that day as we were riding through town. I just found out that that information. It was really beautiful day. The other thing I will say as we talk forward about the town in terms of this coming year or the preparations that we've had, I thought it's been really neat that we talk about the factory, the potential opportunities we have, both with other areas as we think about what may happen in the coming couple of years, both with things happening that we know with the coming houses coming in and also with the opportunity for the changes that have happened in our culture with COVID. So the people who've moved here and other people who do want to move here, it's exciting to think about the opportunities ahead as we've gone through some challenges in 2022, but we also have some neat opportunities ahead. So just thought I would share.
Any questions for Vice Mayor? And you said it perfectly at the beginning, we are all friends up here, no matter, sometimes our thoughts go in different directions about how things should be accomplished. But we are all friends. And if you or your family needs anything from anybody up here for any reason at all, I'm going to take calls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Because most of us, I can be over your house about 5:00 if I can find the right travel. Because that's the big challenge is getting into today's traffic. Always go up the wrong line. But just to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Committee reports and Mr. Presett, do you have anything to report?
I think we're going to see if this future conversation here has any substance or goes anywhere tonight. I think that's probably the major thing going on with my side.
Mr. Bullock, anything new on ARB?
Just some, you know, action items, things that business matters that we took care of at our last meeting. Four properties were worked good. We approved the permanent sign for flowers on the run or to build flower shop down on East Main Street. An interesting design concept with it. 380 Valley, the tavern had some unpermitted work to meet with the manager there to at least get the work finished. So we had to retrograde, go back and decide what to keep or what not to keep. But we decided that we had to have at least complete the work that was started. Then it looks like they started to take some steps in that direction. We also met with the property of a poor condition property. Poor condition properties are those that have structural issues or that are unsealed. And so it's nice to meet with the property owner phone anyway to talk about getting that problem ameliorated, particularly unsealed siding and some soffits that need fixed under the roof. And then we approved new paint for the Scottsville Supply Company location now on Valley Street. So two new colors, as well as fixing the wooden covering above the windows that's now rotting. So they're going to do some updates there to seal up that. Initially, what do we have here? Oh yeah, priorities for enforcement. So the other poor condition properties that we have met with or whether they've not come forward have now tripped over the 90 day deadline to do so, at which point they can start incurring fines for not fixing the work or meeting with us. And our goal, of course, as a board, is to at least get a plan in place for property owners to begin fixing the problem. Some of them are long term issues, but we as a board at least want to see the progress that's being made. And so we're going to, at our August meeting, discuss which properties are particularly just to move forward with, particularly with legal action to try to get them into compliance. We also have some homes that are in a position of, I guess, gone off the market recently that they also be problematic. So we're going to try to navigate those waters a little bit as well. And then the only other item for me is our appointment under a signature.
I see from Mr. Bowling that the property was subject to a tax foreclosure. Took care of the taxes. So that's.
Can I add something? I was having an epiphany of this particular structure that I don't know what I'm supposed to mention the name of. It does happen there. A member of their family came around house four days ago. We sat on the second page, you guys have a chat. And what they wanted to know exactly what the town wants to do. And up to, and it's probably against the living. That's what I'm going for the discussion.
That's right. And I think that's all included in the letters that they received from us, I believe, which identifies the two problem areas. So we'll address that when we meet, which I'm hoping to in August.
Anything you don't, thought of or could add or anything that would help them out? I think they're ready to do something, but it's just, everything's got to come together like.
That's right.
But they did reach out.
Good. Thank you.
Just Britsco, you have something?
I remember a few months ago, it was, I'm not sure if you're about this, with that clutter ordinance. I really liked that. I haven't heard anything about it. I like to do this and that myself. Even if we can't totally enforce it, I think it's good to have something on the books that, you know, you've got to keep up with your property. There's two or three properties in this town that are, you know, just junky. And to be honest, and I, I think having a clutter ordinance might add a little weight to it. And, you know, we could just kind of support them some way and say, hey, you know, get your place in order. But if not, you know, fix a minute. But I kind of like that idea. We are a historic town. We've got, especially in the store there, we've got some places that are really elevated, you know, outside. And just, I know you look at the building. But anyway, I guess, I don't know how that works, but I think it'd be nice to.
Didn't we decide that there were certain ordinances in place already that meant we didn't need the clutter ordinance? Or that we weren't really.
No, we don't have any ordinance in place that does that sort of thing. The clutter ordinance specifically allows localities to do that, to take care of like, you know, two refrigerators that are in your front yard for six months, right, which would count as clutter, for example. And so we have, so the council decided that that would be a good idea. And then, so actually, the next step is for Government Services to take a look at how that could fit into our town. And Jim Bowling, his, the ARB was interested in it primarily for the historic overlay district. We didn't necessarily think it needed to be applied townwide. And Jim felt that it would be appropriate to enforce it within the historic overlay district. And Matt, I think, has looked at some language. There's one locality in Virginia that I think now has one, I think. So there's already language out there that we can, that we can look at. So I think this would be a good thing for Government Services to take up, how can it fit into our own ordinances? And then bring that back to us as a body. We can deliberate it and then ostensibly pass it. Or, you know.
I was like.
I was like, see it, you know, townwide because, you know, we're, we're kind of like the blind and then the elephant, you know? Exactly. About this part of town, they know we've got this park, but they see it every day. I know about our park, etc., etc. And I've recently pulled out a couple of things of my way. So I like to do it townwide.
Yeah. I think I got time to make. So I think, yeah, do government services and see what Jim thinks, you know, where, where it could fit. So, so we can go with it. Definitely see a need.
Mr. Vice Mayor, planning commission.
I will defer to our town clerk.
So our planning commission meeting was the fifth this month. From the agenda, we spoke about, we again spoke on old business, which was the planned unit development. I did a presentation. I have started this year as board member of C three, Community Climate Collaborative. So I gave some insight after having conversations with other board members of General Rod Stroats, some suggestions and then offering some staff support in the future around about climate issues, especially more market driven, energy equity, energy efficiency, EVs like electric vehicles. Things that are more than purvey of C three, just to kind of offer that as a staff member, that there is that resource for the town of Scottsdale. Beyond that short presentation by, by me. We also discussed action on zoning text amendments, which were presented to a planning commission. And then we continued it to receive the final site plan from Tiger Fuels at one fifty three James River Road, which led to a voice vote. I think that would be most of it. There was.
The other thing that came from the site plan was the, the mention of the trail that goes through this. And also some improvements along the road in front.
Anything else?
Wait for, it's not your city, it's the town administrator report.
No, it's just.
This is kind of related, but the ARB has pushed the, or town council actually put the sign for the Tiger Fuel site back there. Have you had any communication with them about the timeline for getting a revised sign?
I personally, that doesn't unfortunately, I think, the best person to ask that is right now.
Okay. I'll follow up into August. That's fine. But they've got their site plan approved. Did they say when they're planning to break ground? What their timeline is for that?
They gave us a timetable a few months ago, but I don't know if that's changed since. That was before the site, before the sign came to town council and it was voted on. That would be a good question that I can follow up with.
The other questions of the planning commission. Council number Heinz, anything on beautification?
Officially, I am now a committee of two, having our first meeting on Wednesday. Bill and I spoke about maybe the two of us getting together and discussing maintenance and beautification together just to get an idea. One of my action items for this week is to talk to Cody and see if he and I could just one afternoon and kind of walk the downtown and kind of discuss and figure out what is him and what would be beautification committee. So we spoke about kind of getting together, talking about that. Cody can walk into that. But yeah, not really too much she court first meeting, especially if it'll be on Wednesday.
Good. Any questions for Ms. Heinz? Mr. Heisen, so good to have you with us for a real meeting. But you're on this side of the microphone instead of that side of the phone. Yeah, that's all right. You have a report from Government Services?
Yes. And we got a bunch of things we'd like to look into. Real soon, but we met last, last Tuesday and some of, I'll just go over the, some of the things we discussed briefly. A big part of it is about communication with the public. And I mentioned website and one of the, if you get a chance, look at Gordonville website. There are less than two thousand people and it's very informative. It's got everything. It's got, it has a little button on the side. You know, ours says how to do, you know, it says pay a bill or something like that. But this has, I want to, and it shows you everything. How to contract, get a contract, how to apply for something, how to find something, how to report a concern, how to be notified, join in. It's really good. So Gordonville dot com is really good. Maybe we could get some of those ideas. And I already talked to Matt and, and Ron a little bit about maybe doing an e-newsletter twice, oh, twice a year at least. That we could kind of like down models, like kind of inform the people of what's going on in town and make it announcements. And also maybe just have a regular mailing, you know, we got, we have the money to pay because there's a lot of people in town who do not have email or internet, not a lot, but there's some, and have a mailing about some, you know, basic issues in town. One of the things that came up about websites, we have a events calendar and it hasn't been updated or used at all. There was nothing of the Bato Festival and nothing about Fourth of July. If you hit that button, it goes directly to shout. And, you know, have a best calendar, if we're not gonna use it, take off, to have it Scottsdale, the best calendar. So we could notify the public. If you're a tourist here, you can go there and you can hit that and see what's going on in town. And again, Gordonville has where to go for restaurants, what are advanced, what, what to do. It's, it's a really good. The other thing we looked at, starting to look at is, is the budget, you know, what we want, what some expenditures we need to push on. And I think one of them stands out is Canal Basin Square. It's the only tourist site in town and it really, exactly like something that really needs some work. Some of the boats need repair. There's those tobacco barrels that have holes in them. Everybody thought, let's work, of course, the bathrooms are, are need work. But that Canal Basin Square, I think I would like to see some money put out for that to really get somebody there to really or work with Matt and Cody to really get that fixed up. Cause I think that's, that's like the corridor of town. It's just such a beautiful thing and it needs work. We also started working on the maintenance schedule that we can give Matt and Cody to work on. You know, I think it's, that's already been done. We talked about having an orientation or policy procedural manual for both the town council and planning commission. So that, like, if I'm coming on, I can find out what I'm still learning. And I knew, I know I talked to some planning commissioners and I was planning a question too. It's like, what's this all about? You know, what, what, where do I find the information? What do I do? What's my job? What's my job description? So, and Javier's already given us some things about, about that already. And so as far as the town council, the planning commission should, I think, should have the procedural man, manual about what the jobs are, what the policies are. And the other thing is I'd like to see improvement in communication with the town council itself. There are two grants recently that, that I don't think, maybe you all know about, but I, I've just find it out about them. And, and I talked to Javier already about doing this. There's, and I think there are really things we should celebrate in our town. We're gonna have a, it looks like a pretty cool bulletin board. And I think that needs to be on the bulletin board. It needs to be on the website. We might want to have a presentation, bring people in here. I mean, they got those rocks down there. I think you could do a lot with those rocks and that. You know, you make seats out of them and thickened tables. And I think that could be really neat to see. I mean, it's, it's, and I think it'd be good to have a public presentation to invite everybody to see it. And the other one that I just found out about, and this will involve making its budget too, is, and I'm surprised it hasn't been mentioned, we're having a handicap accessible dock, fishing dock at Van Feed Nature. I don't know if you know, we have a, a great little reservoir down here that is fishing and we got trails and we got a grant for, for people who are handicapped come down there and go fishing on the, on the dock. And we haven't figured out how they're gonna get that one there because you've got a lot of riggers down there, but probably an exception, of course. So we got these two, two items. This, I, I'd like to see a rendition of that on the website or on the bulletin board.
Bill, just one thing to clarify. We do have a plan for how people would get to that area, but I think it's, but yes, that we, and we've been talking about the dock a couple of months.
And you have pictures of it?
It's part of some of the work that we've done in the past.
Okay. Well, maybe if we get the picture of it and, and put it up on a website or downstairs on the bulletin board and spread that around it, it'd be nice to have a presentation about that too and how that's gonna work. Because we do have gates down there and there are some regulations about, and, and actually the timeframe for that too. I mean, I think, you know, is it gonna happen this year?
Yeah, well, Matt talked a lot about it, maybe before you got up, before you got a council, but it's a grant that came from the Department of Wildlife Resources. It's been in process. He's got it all specked out. They work with, through our committee, there's a couple of people who are, have disabilities who've been involved in the process.
He was surprised we didn't know much about it either.
And then it's gonna be, but the process, so it's, it's, it's in the procurement stage and it's, it should be, I think, by early fall.
Great. That's great.
Yeah, Matt, Matt will have the update on that when it gets back.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's something we'd like to see more, so everybody knows what's going on. And then the last thing I have is the clutter ordinance.
I was able to procure the backup of both, as you mentioned, of the site landing event by the riverfront. So I'm more than willing to draft up something quickly to kind of explain what I'm putting up on the bulletin board, but I'm not really comfortable with WordPress on my own and to.
It's just something that we got.
But it's something we'll get to towards the end of the month.
And I, and I agree that these are things that are worth publicizing out there too. They're progress, let them go. They're gonna be impactful and, and they're gonna transform parts of town in a way. So I think getting out there in the bulletin board at least would be a good thing for us to do for sure. Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Heis?
I'm sorry, I'm not protocolist, but can I?
Yeah, I don't want. Sorry with the may.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I would just love to be involved in some of these things as I'm a former IT professional and I would love to be involved with communication. My skills are probably somewhat dated, but I can probably help in some ways. And I think not just, you know, to your point about Mr. Mayor, I think you can adjust to the website and try and find the agenda. It's a lot easier when it's a push instead of a pull all the time. I think pull works for some things, but not everything. And I'd also love to be involved in, we both love to be involved in the common space over the major.
We don't have a significant number of hot button items on the agenda tonight, so meetings should not last too awful long. If their schedule permits you to stay after the meeting, you and Mr. Heisen, get your heads together. You'd be another member of this committee. All right, that's super. Thank you so much. Mr. Fang, what have you got on infrastructure, public safety, all that good stuff?
All my people. Right now, I'm a committee of four because in about a year ago, we, we had a public safety and we had Chief Bowing came in and some of his officers came in. One, two, five, four, usually captain would come in and if invited, maybe to have a ACF or representative, maybe you could come down. We never really had items referred from council to committee and our committee never really took much back to the council except for that discussion. And I'm sure, you know, as far as my job description goes, Bill brought a lot of stuff, a committee like, that's a public safety, infrastructure should be looking at and working hand in hand with government services because here's what we need to have, we're gonna do it. And who's gonna do it? I'd like to see the town advertise for members, I don't know if I can get the old band back together or not, but we only had about four of us. And that's our district, so we meet monthly. Just starting out, I'd like to see a meeting and then as needed until we finally figure out the director will approach things in town. So if someone in town could advertise to the, you know, people in the community that, you know, at this committee is looking to be. As far as talking with the police department, I'm going to be in your case with the chief at least once a week. We've had discussions. Nothing I need to bring back to you is just how we feel about things.
Good. For some reason, he was on vacation, they couldn't attend the meeting where he needs to give a report, then you can give his report for him.
And, you know, with, with, with his duties and, and, you know, he has other, you know, functions to attend and the workshop and the council. I don't want him loading down and tell those two at a meeting. He's got a script unless something's brought to their committee, which really doesn't exist, you know, several meetings, so. Like to see some photos.
Questions for?
People like on our committees, they could be on more than one committee, right?
Oh, sure.
Can we be on more than one committee?
Yeah.
Cause that's kind of interest of mine too, that's helping. So I might come to you from the committee sometime.
It used to be all one and then it got to the public safety. That got folded into government services and then they, now we got split them up again for a bit, but yeah, that would work.
To me, that's one of the most important things, public safety. You know, we talk, we are fortunate, we.
We stretched, you know, police father rescue when, when we got these committees and that was, oh, it wasn't really, unless we saw a hazard in town. So that's why I said the air conditions need to work very closely.
I haven't taken the time to look, but is all those construction trucks still parked over at the house next to the fireplace?
And you still got this day on the other side. And that house is supposed to be demolished.
Yeah.
So it's really going down too. I consider around six hours road, bunch of corridors, valley and.
Yeah, it is.
Probably most people coming in on six are coming here. And a lot of the people on tour are going straight on through, no stopping.
But I don't know, I don't know who should talk to the party's concern, whether it be the town administrator or the police or me or who.
All right.
That's some work for the.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Fang? All right. I hear from town council discussion in action. The first one is this committee charges responsibility sheet that you have in front of you. And I know government services is looking over this, which is one of their tasks. See, is this the one that you showed me earlier today?
No, this is it. Actually, I wouldn't want this committee set up work session to discuss this. I added it, there's some language and all that, but I think it'd be good to kind of make sure we, we're all on the same page and we know what's going on. Like, one of the things that came to mind right away when I looked at it is like some, some have it like every Tuesday or once a month. And some have monthly, they don't say when. Maybe they just go ask needed too, but I think it'd be good to have a built in day and time. So everybody knows when they happen and if you want to go to them and they can always cancel or they can say we're every other month or something. But I think that might be good to have. I'm just wondering if it'd be better to flesh it out at a work session rather than here.
Anyone have any objections to us putting this on hold next month? The next work session, Mr. Heisen will have to come up with some instructive changes to this piece of paper.
I think, I think that sounds great. You've already done a lot of it.
Cause we chatted a little bit earlier with Harry doing all this. He has some good points on this. Cause we chatted a little bit earlier with Adam on this, he has some good points on this.
So we need to bring up one, what I that really stood out that we changed and that that it works with me is uh that we are not chairman. As much as possible, I know Zach's been kind of the chairman, but I think if there's a possibility that we are not the chairman, we have a V A zone, I think it makes it more impartial and. Brings it to public and we don't have a dual role, I know that might be hard for you, but I remember when Jeffrey Plank was on it, I think that was ideal and with me, it's ideal, it's Scott's is on it. And I go to the meetings and and he leads them and he keeps minutes and so I think it's just a better way of operating than for us to be uh. To be in charge of meetings, but I mean, it's something to look at if 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 possible, I don't know if anybody would wanna take that here.
Yeah, they they are big guidelines in the uh zoning book, say that the committee won't elect your chairman.
Okay, okay, so you were elect, well, a while back, for how for how long, for two years?
As long as his term.
Okay, so so they elect, so, well, that's different, yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, that's probably true of all the committees, so that might be the way to go, but uh I just think it's better to have it.
If if nobody has an objection, and I don't think we need to vote on table in this for next month, but let's. Let's see what government services presents at their work session in in August and then we can vote on it in the uh in the August council meeting if we agree with all any any changes that might be made. Okay, uh wherever do we stand uh on the staff bonus equation thing? I hope so.
Uh I think you guys have kind of heard my much view on it, I think that'd be a good thing to do. I'm comfortable with that amount of my budget being taken away and I think it's a good, you know, first step. It leaves me enough that I'm confident that at least the events that we've done can be done to the level of this. And I have a good volunteer group of people that want to help me with this as far as staffing and uh resources, so I'm not not concerned about that. I think our staff works hard, at least work hard, I think it would be a good gesture and. Anyone else?
Do you have uh those figures that you can present at this point to the council so we can go ahead and vote on this?
Yeah, so I think to reiterate, uh it would be five hundred with eight staff members, so that would be our full time staff and our police chief excluding uh Mr. Wallace, to be clear. Uh that would easily, doing the math, would come out to four thousand. Uh if you want some suggestive language, I would look for some suggestive language.
You wanna make a motion?
Motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to pass the staff numbers. It's uh.
And the amount of five hundred.
And the amount of five hundred.
For paid staff number.
Paid staff and probably a police chief.
Totally.
Totally four thousand.
Equally appropriated between all staff.
And all second base.
All right, is there any discussion on this?
So this is for the coming fiscal year.
Is it is it last year's money that's left or this year's money that we just started? Part of this. So this is all the budget and whatever the remaining is. Part of this year's business that we already funded.
I think it's also a recognition, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I had a chance to talk to somebody about this issue, also. The there was there was more volunteerism in the past and then was put more money into the budget, I think if it's sent to go back to more volunteers.
I agree, I think it's, I think it's very achievable. The only thing I would add that we could change up, I mean, and we'll talk about. Uh if Cody's gonna get one, unification might want to be, I don't know if pulled back is the right word. But having got checkpoints that he can make as far as town maintenance until, you know, so whether it's a month or a couple of weeks or two months where he's. Got goals and he achieves those goals, you know, I think previously we talked about, you know, having some basic things set up for him and he makes those checkpoints, you know, and. That might be released at that point, I don't know if that's okay, I don't know if that's a good idea, but some of the people.
Is he included in that four thousand?
I'm not sure if he, yeah.
Yeah.
Who else, who else included, can you quote who they are? Yes, Cody and Heather. Yes, the police. Please tell me, two police? Peter or three? Clear. Oh, two police, yes, and then D M V staff. And who? The D M V staff. How many are there? Whatever the remainder.
And we're losing this uh handler.
So she wouldn't get one? Well, I I I thought about this, my concerns are, first of all, it's the beginning of the fiscal year. And this is money that uh that may be needed next year, we may, next spring, we may. Come down to, well, we don't have enough money and we might have to to uh raise taxes or or cut a cut a staff, or cut staff hours. And because we're we're hurting, so I think I would prefer to do it next year to see if we have the money available. And the other thing is that basically, you know, everybody's suffering with this uh inflation gas and we all have to adjust our our driving, you know. I don't know if we should be in the business of uh of of, you know, supporting, you know, people's, you know, because of inflation, I. I think that's federal government kind of thing, I, to me, I mean, I I think it's a nice gesture, it's a real nice gesture, but I I just feel like it's uh. An overreach basically that we're doing, but unless it was last year's budget, if we had money from last year left over, get it to them, you know, but it's this year's budget. I, you know, you never know it's gonna happen next year.
But it's 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 money allocated strictly for events, you know, it's not like we're taking money away from.
But that wouldn't, that would be next year's bateau and and the other bets, we don't even know how much will it be, right?
But yeah, Alex is saying he's confident that we.
Oh, you can say it, you can you can cover it, okay.
How much, how much you got? Looking at the budget.
How much you got?
The total, really?
You're for your.
That's ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
Yes, ten thousand.
I think those are all legitimate points, but I I would also go back to the part of what Councilor said is, just like uh. We are dealing with an economic situation that it's true across the board, people are dealing with many different challenges. In good faith, we are simply trying to say to those. Who we have the ability to do something for, that we wanna do something for, which is retaining that, and I really think it's a good idea, I think it's actually a very novel idea, but I appreciate the thought of. It comes from, and I a recognition, too, that we may have not the need to do the same budget that we've done in the past because of a different approach that you're bringing. To this, of which I which I appreciate, so I I I do think it's a good idea.
Yes, and I don't, it's not increasing our budget, we're not pulling money from. From another source here, it's something I'm comfortable with the amount of money and making sure that the standards are not gonna be dropped as far as the town events. I think I think we're seeing increasing those, I think we're gonna see increasing frequency of events. Our staff is doing a good job. Yeah, the only question, the only question I have is that I I don't even know if it's allowable, but can. Can that event money be pushed over to like getting a drinking fountain at the bateau park or uh getting getting a boat fixed, I mean, can that, you can't uh, you can't, you can't move that kind of money to another.
It could go anywhere, we could do anything, we could do whatever we want to.
It's not a big amount of money there, it's because it needs me, but I don't wanna say I'm gonna do all volunteer and then. Not be able to do it, so I think if in the future we see, so at the end of this year, if we see that everything went smoothly and now I can track all those expenditures we have.
Maybe just another similar. So that being, that being said, since this is kind of a bit of an experiment in doing events and ten dollars has been played in the past, um I wonder if it would make, cause I I like this. So I think it's a good idea, but I also don't like the committee to come up short. So I I wonder if it would be worthwhile waiting, um just to make sure that you've got enough.
I think the problem in my eyes for that is. The effects are now, so I don't want to, you know, inflation's going down, people are, you know. In a better financial state, and I'm not sure where they are with that, but my assumption would be to hurt like everybody else, you know, if that's going down. It seems like.
I think now to do it. Yeah, let me just say this, too, and having sat in this chair for twelve years, and Mr. Mayor, you might say the same thing. There's a recognition, I guess I would say, in what Councilor said had suggested, which is unusual and it's creative. I haven't heard, I don't remember, maybe, Mr. Mayor, you can correct me, I can't remember if somebody's saying in the past, a government agency saying, we wanna return some of our money and use it elsewhere, and I think. My my complimenting you on this is because I think our staff would greatly appreciate it, I think it would mean, and whether we call it inflation. Whether we call it just a recognition that they're underpaid in other ways, it's a, right now, there's some employees, market, you can get a job anywhere to do anything. I mean, it's just wide open right now, it's it's simply true, and the idea to communicate that we wanna communicate to our staff that we care. Yes, we're taking a risk, I I think, I can't say Heisen is is correct, we are taking a risk at the same time. We're giving diligence to Councilor Set to say, you've looked at it, we think it's a great idea, I I think it's worth giving a try.
Come up, come up with a bet set, put money into town.
Yeah.
And I'm saying the same about this, uh but last Christmas, the mayor has a. Flying item to use and we hadn't used any of it, so I took it. Half of that and gave all the staff Christmas gifts. So it's not, this is not a Christmas.
No, I do, I do think though, that if everyone's gonna get five hundred dollars just to give it sort of unattached to anything else, I think. Not to single anyone out for that, I think if we're concerned about job performance and something like that, that's what we have evaluations for, and we should just make sure that we're following through on evaluations and things, but. Which is its own thing.
I don't think that's just.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you're right about that, I think, I think, I think that's right, if we're giving people, you know, a little bonus, they can just give her a bit of that bonus.
No, did the part time people get the same bonus full time?
Since, I guess, the chief's part time.
No, I think so, I think the only part time person on the chief.
Chief is the only part time person right now, and I wouldn't count the site that for farmers market for uh for our maintenance, that's that. Definitely considered that segment, okay. And then I I also wanna clarify for eight, uh cause we, Matt, we talked back and forth, but eight for full time staff, which would include Matt, that would still be four thousand.
Did you say it would not?
It would.
It would, yeah. And I just wanna make that clear, because of the topic of discussion and also I'm paying.
Sure, sure. That's your intention, right?
Yes.
Hey, wants to move aside, any more discussion? It's time for a court call before vote.
That's it?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Pines?
Yes.
Uh Heis?
No.
Fang?
Yes.
The last item uh is appointment of Josh Pector to term of service on the A R B, which he volunteered for uh last month. Your motion to appoint Josh to the A R B.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Josh Victor, determine service on the architectural.
And is it a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion on Mr. Pec?
I'd just like to talk about Josh a moment, so the public knows, Josh has been a long time a a member of this body, he served on council, various committees, including planning commission for some time, which was chair, I think, for a while. Um he's a town resident, and in order to fill the A R B, we need three town residents, at least three town residents, and the others could be out of town, and he meets uh those conditions, I know he's uh interested in serving the town in other, in another capacity. And the A R B voted for his appointment, so I'll just want to put it out there.
So if you move aside, any more discussion?
That's it?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Pines?
Yes.
Heis?
Yes.
Fang?
Yes.
Alex?
Last item on the agenda, the staff reports, we have one staff there tonight that is prepared to report.
Um I think the mayor already touched upon on our meeting at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh later in the, that was last Thursday, later in the days, with Matt and Mr. Wallace, I said, I went over to uh the I lab over at Arden. S G B A, uh there was a entrepreneur roundtable uh with Senator John Warner. Uh which he was kind of expressing his efforts as a senator to help out with entrepreneurial efforts. Um our invitation came through our efforts with the entrepreneurial engagement we did earlier in the year. Um shorthand, kind of the shark pick we did down here, uh our partners in that organization did share a success story, which uh they'll be sharing. Our our efforts down here as a success story of actually being able to foster entrepreneurship, especially on a local level. There was a little bit of input, uh awareness about how the age of the, sorry, sorry, American rescue planes, developing and shifts that have occurred recently in small business loans. Um but I think the most perfect thing was what I led with our partners over uh with uh our entrepreneurial incubator event, we're willing to share with Warner, it's kind of a success story. Beyond that, I wanted to, I already touched upon, when we touched upon joining uh the Boys and Girls Club, through government services, we touched upon uh. Sharing more information on both of our projects as a as a way to kind of acknowledge our efforts and work here. Uh the town of Scottsdale, and also to show what public energy is providing uh the town. One last thing I would like to share, I would just wanted a, with discretion, I did receive today from a clerk of Alamo County that uh. The county is looking this fall to do our annual joint session with the board and uh what I wanted to do with all of this follow up, the email, see what they'll, they'll be at the fall. And try to set up something that works uh between uh both parties.
Great.
What they've decided.
Any questions for the clerk?
Uh just want to clarify one about the change to the D M V, cause I know we talked about moving to a. Open schedule, no appointments, has there been any forward movement with getting that shift?
I think I also spoke with Heis about it, where my thoughts as of today is also, we need to think about how to kind of publicize it more and get the word out. So I think there's still a uh a perception that we're still under a older, more COVID-like rules of appointments.
Yeah.
But it is open for people to come in.
It is open all the time now, I think.
We do, we do push people to do appointments, it does make it easier for them to schedule, especially when they have to do responsibilities that aren't like client facing.
Yep.
Uh, you know, administrative, uh financial, uh, you know, breakaway means of the office. But I I do think in that comment that I was talking about, kind of sharing more about what Victory Hall was doing. Um probably try and give a word out against the staff, you know, with a more momentum going.
Okay.
Is Latoya, is there gonna be a gap in staffing, or do we have somebody who's gonna be starting right?
We're trying our best, I know Matt has been working with her since, uh that would be more his kind of career in regards to both of us, but to try to get somebody.
And what's it, the the year date or the year?
Year date for.
August.
Yeah, the.
August. Cause one of the things that fits to him is maybe we could have an evaluation for. Financial evaluation in August to see where we are with that and whether it's it's uh projected to make money. First year, I know if you get lost, but to get some idea about the. Beneficial.
I think that'd be prudent, that's kind of the, we have a moment to say this has been like a cycle. Um I would just ask for the council, what best approach is that inside the work session? Uh is that something first to go with services? Work session.
Anything else, any questions, anything else anybody have on their mind?
One thing, uh. Especially with the nine degree, keep weather standards exposed at all.
I haven't heard a word, but it was.
I don't, I I think you see the Dallas family who's anxious about. Please.
I hate to have a lot of upper parents that who are deep top of that attitude.
Well, that that project, so that's on county park, right?
Yeah, that's kind of.
And then I I forget the details of that, so they they put up money for it.
What are the details, that details, they're gonna do it.
Well, that that project, so that's on county park, right?
That's kind of, yeah, that's kind of.
And then I I forget the details of that, so they they put up the money for it.
What are the details, that details, but they're gonna do it, there's only really one place to do it and that's, you know, in that empty area.
That's right, yeah.
Behind the tent, but they, what I understand, that that dilapidated post office there, they won't sell that unless somebody buys the post office as well. And so, you know, that triple the price, whatever, so they won't just sell the land because that's where the money is.
Didn't we think to put it between the playground and the test, not necessarily behind the playground, but didn't they show us one plan between the test area and the.
Refusal area and the rush room and the tennis court and the playground.
But the deputy of county will wait, because that's their land.
Heard you think on that?
No. Last you spoke about was the resolution you provided, so I think it might be followed up with county staff on our side. It's my best, it's my best. I think I believe the best approach, I'd say that.
Anything else? If Charlotte's file, the moral conviction and visitors bureau is desperately in need of help, if anybody's required job. We had the executive director bring the van down Saturday to the park of the farmers market, but so shorthand they are. So, you know, if anybody is still to talk to.
You will pay.
Thank God.
And travels throughout the county.
So if uh someone has any other items of business to bring up, we thank those of you who spoke this evening. And we'd always like to see our supervisor. Motion to adjourn. Second.